If we can't hear you, Mayor.
It crackles. We'll go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number 21-08 order. Cindy Roehl, please.
Here.
I'm not hearing Cindy.
I'm here too, but I can't hear you, Cindy.
I could hear the mayor.
Temple?
Here.
I can hear you now, Cindy.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, apologies on this, but I can't hear you, Mayor.
Nor can I. No sound coming in.
It's very low.
Councilmember Ready, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes, I can as well.
Councilmember Temple and Ready, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, but we can't see you now.
We can't see her.
Wonderful. Again, we want to welcome everyone that is with us here this evening. If you are here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications here to do that, and we would encourage you, if you are not in the audience, rather with us online, to indicate that you do want to speak on public communications by raising your hand, and Cindy will take note of that, and she will run in to speak at the appropriate time. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, and I think we'll ask General Perot to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the agenda of the Iowa National Guard. Any changes to the agenda?
This one, the item in the air is going to be to give to the ward and city to review, which we have on the work section. It's pretty important to get that discussion seen, so change this to the agenda, we will get that at some point in time.
I think we have another presentation we need to get on the agenda as well. And I do know that Councilman or Temple, are you still getting to leave at day 15?
Approximately, yeah, I might be able to stay a little past, but let's shoot for that as best we can.
Are you sure we've got to the items that you need to participate in before you have to leave then? With no other chain, councilmembers, any other changes to the agenda? With no other changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Senator Martin?
Second vote.
We have a motion of seconds, Cindy, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications. We have quite a few proclamations and presentations on our public communications agenda this evening, the first being the Kites on the Green proclamation.
I was afraid I was going to.
And recognition. Janet, do you want to help me with whatever we need to do on that?
We didn't, we know you were here for the information, so you didn't have to read the whole proclamation.
Okay, well, I will just commend the proclamation to everyone. Kites on the Green is coming up. We've had a couple of pop-up events, one very successful one this last weekend, and we have another one coming up this weekend, which will be at Johnson Commons by the library. But the actual Kites on the Green event is scheduled for May 1st. We have some flyers, and it will go from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I can tell just based on the participation we had this past weekend that depending on how weather cooperates with us, we can expect, I think, a huge turnout, because people are anxious to get outside and to spend time with their families and friends in outdoor activities. So I expect it to be a really great event this year. And just to share with everyone, we have been contacted by a lot of kite flyers from throughout the country wanting to know if they can come and participate and attend our event, because there just aren't that many of these events ongoing this year. So it'll be, it'll be a really, really great event. If the weather cooperates somewhere, or since it snowed today, it doesn't have a beautiful day in the middle of the winter. Anyway, but I encourage everyone to go participate in that. The next one is a recognition and plaque presentation to the city of Johnston, Iowa National Guard.
Is this on?
Well, I think it's supposed to turn on. There you go.
There, how's that?
Got it.
Hey, Mayor, thanks for giving us a few minutes here. This past year has been a challenge for everybody, but it's given us a chance to reflect in what we're thankful for, and the relationship that Iowa National Guard, Camp Dye, has, and what we continue to have with the city of Johnston is admirable. We've worked with your full-time staff for years. We've had a great relationship. We look forward to continuing that. So we've developed a plaque from Camp Dye's wallet that we would like to present to you from the men and women of the Iowa National Guard, our full-time Iowa Department of Public Defense employees. And with this new vehicle building, we hope you find a place to live best.
Do you think I might go over to the mayor's office? You know, they have an office for me now.
I think we all get to share.
Oh, this is beautiful. I can tell from that. You bet. Thank you very much. And again, this is just absolutely gorgeous. And it does say, "In recognition of the city of Johnston for their unwavering support of the Iowa National Guard," and Camp Dye. Very nice. And you know, we have our own, really good picture. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
The next proclamation is the 2021 BiCon proclamation. And again, I would just encourage everyone to take a look at that proclamation. The thing to note there is the mayor's bi card is coming up on May 15th. And that will be a Saturday this year, so it will give our residents and businesses and community, if you just take, and this year will be a special event, because we'll have the unveiling of Up Down, and he'll lead the group on his tricycle in our ride on the median. And I think we plan to end up at Hyde again, and then he'll
At Terrapart.
At Terrapart. And Hyde will provide lunch for us there. So it's been a great event in the past, and again, a brand new event this year. So thanks to all of the staff that have helped put that together. Next, we have the 2021 Arbor Day proclamation. And do we have anyone here to receive that? Okay, well, I would just commend that to you. Again, we're trying to move through these quickly tonight, because maybe I've got this party night on my schedule, so again, encourage everyone to read that one. The next one is the proclamation declaring May 2021 as NF Awareness Month, May 17, 2021, as World Neurofibromentosis Awareness Day. And I think we do have someone here for that, don't we? Okay. Did you have them up and introduce yourself and share us what this is all about? There you go.
I'm Karen Lam, and my daughter has 38, has neurofibromentosis, and that's why I'm here, because not a lot of people know about it. One in 3,000 kids have it. So that's, and a lot of my friends don't even know my daughter has it. It's just something that not a lot of people are aware. When my daughter was diagnosed back when she was three, I had never heard of it. The doctors hardly knew anything about it, but there's been so much research and so much good that's come out of it. So, and I forgot that.
Well, let me read the proclamation from here, so I can read it without having to read it through a cloth mask, and then I'll present it to you. Declaring May 21, 2021, as NF Awareness Month, and May 17, 2021, as World Neurofibromentosis Awareness Day. I get a cold. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May 17, 2021, as World Neurofibromentosis NF Awareness Day, and May 2021, as NF Awareness Month. To educate the public about the rare genetic disorder. And whereas, although over 2 million people around the world are living with a NF, and one in every 3,000 births is diagnosed with a NF, it is still relatively unknown to the public. And whereas NF affects all populations equally, regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. And whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, and also can affect the development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin. And whereas, the disorder can lead to blindness, dizziness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, seasonal pain, and cancer. And whereas, the Children's Tumor Foundation is actively fostering, fostering collaborative partnerships in both science and industry to speed the drug research and development process through a number of consortia called CNO-OS. And whereas, the Children's Tumor Foundation provides patient and family support with its information resources, youth programs, and local charter activities. And whereas, much remains to be done in raising global awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. Now therefore, I, Volkeren Bill, in recognition of this important initiative, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as NF Awareness Month, and May 17, 2021, as World Neurofibromentosis NF Awareness Day in the city of Johnston. And stated, and I've already signed it, and I need to give Cindy to attest to that. And I'll present it to you, and she can sign it.
There's a good copy in there somewhere.
Yeah? I need a camera person to order.
We won't steal.
Well, I just want to congratulate you. Thank you for bringing this to us. Oh, yeah. I know this one. Well, say hi to Richard. Remember which person?
Carolyn.
Sure. Carolyn is married.
Carolyn, I'll take that.
Last name.
It's rude for me to read that.
Who I am known of as a resident of Johnson, who are not as last watching you. Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Actually, there's a nicer one.
Yeah.
Here, this is. Okay, the next proclamation, our actual presentation from American Energy for Three-Swings Program.
Well, I don't have a nice wood plaque for you, but I do have some people, so.
Take what you got.
Yeah. I would do an American Energy, ask for community link for John Hudson, and so, really happy to be here tonight and say that this community was chosen, won 54 in our show's territory, for each of the grants, for actually three please program in this year. So really excited about the continued partnership that we have with you guys. And I just want to say thank you to you guys for your dedication to Three-Swings in the community. It really does make it a great place to live and work. So that's what that, I would like to present, to check the $2,000 deal, and look forward to seeing what you guys come up with for a treat right being, probably, two days.
Josh, can we use this?
What's that? Oh, I think we did, after the show and tornado and.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, and last one is Johnson City Hall Masonry Institute of Iowa Appreciation Award. And it'll be more exciting.
The mayor has the award. Masonry Institute of Iowa is a group of organizations that are members that do Masonry work, and so CEDOR, Masonry did the limestone work on the city hall building, submitted our project for an award, and so we've been writing messages, one of the few around the state, plenty of them.
Okay, that takes us to all of the scheduled presentations and proclamations. Cindy, is there anyone on Zoom with us that has indicated that they would like to make comments this evening?
Not seeing anyone. Not seeing anyone.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings. We have two scheduled public hearings this evening. The first one, to conduct a public hearing to amend the budget for the year ending June 30, 2021, and consider approval of resolution number 21-103. Public hearing, seven 26.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The current budget was adopted on March 16, 2020, and since that was adopted in March of 2020, the global pandemic occurred, and activities as normally planned did not occur. This amendment is the first amendment to the budget, and maybe the only amendment. It's just time to tell. We're already running out of time, as the calendar continues to put in play here. But a number of situations have taken place regarding the need for this budget amendment. COVID-19, obviously. We had two tornadoes, a deratio, timing of some capital projects, which included the Pioneer Parkway Trail, our Johnson Commons, the Project Ignite, Merle Road, Northwest 62nd Avenue intersection project, the final, I'm sure, the Days of Northwest 70th with construction, and then deeper drive overlay. We also had debt issuance of 2020E occur, and we also had the reallocation 2017D and 2018A. We had a property purchase that included property at 5831 Northwest 63rd Place, property from the city of Arrieta, and some Ignite property. We had equipment that we ordered in FY '20 that we did not receive until FY '21, and so we're amended for those purchases as well. In summary, the amendment includes the adjustment of a slightly over $4 million, which was our amended budget beginning balance on July 1st of 2020, and we also are amending our ending balance by approximately $6.9 or $7 million. And overall, our revenues are increasing 10.5 million, and our expenses are increasing 7.6 million, of which 2.6 million is internal transfers. So as you recall, budget amendments are only needed if the budget expenditure exceeds a program or function area, not necessarily needed if it's because of revenue issue, however, we do try to come closer in line because they have issues when we have our audit. The notice of public hearing was published on August, no, August, April 9, excuse me, and the resolution in your packet tonight and the public hearing are all included, along with detailed pages for all program areas. If you have any questions, you will have me answer.
Council, any questions for Teresa?
So Teresa, so it shows here that, I think if I'm reading this right, that our ending balance can be 45 million, 30,000.
Correct.
So we should be thirty, twenty one.
I forgot.
When we, when we put our budget together back in March, when we, was this the number we were anticipating? Is this starting point, or is this different?
That is what we had.
Okay.
Or when we, this March, when we first got, yes.
Yeah, so, 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 so we, we don't have to, we don't have to, we aren't giving any.
Okay.
Any other questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience or on Zoom with us who would like to make comments?
Seeing none.
Now, the closed public hearing, and seven 29. We have a motion to approve resolution number 21-103.
Senator Martin? Second vote.
Second, any discussion? No, Cindy, please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Second public hearing is to consider resolution number 21-10A, authorizing public improvement for the Crescent Chase SRF sponsored project, which requires the acquisition of property. We'll open this public hearing at seven thirty.
Good evening. As you council is aware, the staff has been working on the development of the Crescent Chase SRF stormwater project that extends from Crescent Chase, just west of Northwest 86th Street, west of Northwest 94th Street, that entire channel. We got to work on that property acquisition, and we're in need of acquiring, in particular, the property where you see the basin, just off of 94th Street there. Josh Devour, a co- project engineer in the project, is going to walk through a short presentation just to describe the project funding, the project scope, and our limitations, and why the property is needed. I'll go with Josh. Thank you, David.
Presentation, I understand. There's a presentation, I understand.
Oh. I'm going there.
Oh, I can't just talk unless it's for you, you know, that I'm short, so we've already, oh, you. Crescent Chase sponsor project is a channel stabilization. It is a part of, the funding is a part of the SRF. Open up the interest, and it came back to the state, is actually donated to you to do waterfall improvements. As part of that, the requirement to ensure the project is eligible, you have to treat the 1.25 trillion of them, and you also have to treat and capture and add the 2.67 trillion of them to the channel protection volume. All necessary criteria, all design elements of project need to meet the Iowa's own organic panel. Is to reduce the sediment loadings, nutrient loadings in the runoff, as we refer to it, as an air watershed. This next slide here is the existing stream assessment that we performed last year. The yellow line is on the left-hand side. That is an intermittent water to the US, and as some of you may know, the waters of the US is regulated by the Army Corps. As you move further east, for Crescent Chase and 86th Street, it turns to a green line, which is a perennial stream. This perennial stream always has a base well, and it's either from groundwater or stormwater runoff. And we do have one small wetland within the watershed that luckily we are not going to be disturbing of this property. Something to note is the Army Corps of Engineers does not permit regularly stormwater controls within a front, it's not impossible, but it is very strong. This image here is an overall of the drainage area. It goes all the way from Summit Horizon, west of 94th Street, just east of 100th. And then there's approximately 100 acres total that are in Crescent Chase, 70 acres drains, a couple detention ponds are very small to see, and I don't know how, if you have slides or variable, easily, give it.
If we don't.
Okay. I do not have a laser pointer, and it's impossible to keep going zooming. But where the basin is currently located, there's about 70 acres of drainage, which is fully developed, and we're not going to do any redevelopment, and it's still inside some of the property. Of that 70 acres, that basin is able to treat just under 20 acres for water quality, and that is the component that is going to be eligible for the SRF reversal. And with that basin, it also lacks the high peak flows, which actually is what's causing all the erosion through the channel. There's severe downcaving, there are head cuts that are taller than I am, I'm over six feet tall. Once you get to the eastern portion, there is some slopes that are going to be laid back, and a series of engine rock, so that would be installed to help guide the flows down and reduce the sediment load. We flipped it on this side. This is a more zoomed-in version of what we are actually recommending and what is being reviewed. We have to get our design approved by the DNR, the US Army Corps of Engineers, as well as local city floodwaters. The basin, which is just off the screen, it takes up an entire lot, gal lot, and we are able to maintain there's an existing easement, it'll be 60 foot wide, that encompasses approximately three quarters of the north property line, and that easement is an existing easement that provides access to the two parcels to the north. Then, as I was discussing before, we have a series of rock ripples that are placed to help guide and let the water down, and also redirect flows away from the Rose and Banks. This is the zoomed-in version of the actual stormwater wetland. Prior, this has gone through several iterations, as we've talked with the DNR consistently, to make sure that we are meeting funding requirements and everything is reversible. The.
I assume everybody else lost the connection too, huh?
Yes, Clayton did.
Yes, yeah, Temple, Temple lost.
I'll run in there and make sure they know.
Having land taking plants, replanting trees provide a better, higher quality of upper roof than what you're removing.
Thank you.
Uh, you actually cut me off on the, the last one. So the last slide, uh, here's the right of way status. All of the parcels in green, and there's sixteen of them already signed and have in hand and ready to be executed. The two parcels are in yellow. We actually have come to terms and everyone's agreeable, which is trying to have to see final signature as well. There is the one parcel that contains the stormwater wetland and that is part of this. That was my update, so if there's any further questions other than the trees, I will be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any further questions?
Counsel, can we just go back to this, the slide that shows the existing stream conditions?
Yes. You want this one or you want the?
Like the photo, it says existing stream conditions.
Oh, yes.
Very good. You know, I, I, you know, the primary purpose of this program is a waterfall.
Yes.
But I think, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of communication around the community about people who are very concerned about mature, native, mature trees in our community. And we're, one of the sort of secondary benefits of our stormwater program is is that if you look at that basin there, there's a lot of really, you know, heavy tree cover there that is threatened today because of erosion.
Yes.
And so one of the real benefits for folks in our community who are very concerned about protecting trees, and these may not be the most fanciest trees in the world, but, but they, they do provide the benefits that trees do, that we get. They're the carbon dioxide and those different things. So I think one of the things that we, that we kind of understand is that one of the benefits of our stormwater utility is not just the water quality aspect, but also it plays a very important role here, but other places around our, our community, of helping to protect and ensure trees that are already in existence. So just wanted to kind of point that out.
And I will also say that while the, the line work and coloring is up to date, the aerial is somewhat outdated. During our site reviews, there actually were mature trees dying. And we had several property owners along with southern portion that were actually concerned about the health of the trees that are out there today.
And part of that is. Because of erosion.
The erosion, but also the heavy, uh, dissolved solids and just the overall, the drainage of the channel.
Yeah.
It is undermining the real system of the industry.
Anyway, I just think that's something we need to, you know, if we, if we look to, for folks who are concerned about the lack of mature trees in our community, I think that the stormwater utility program is a plan that we have in place. We're very good at helping to contain the mature trees in our community. Kind of make sure we do.
You have a question, Charles? This is a public hearing. Do we, is there anyone in the audience here who wants to make comments? Not any of you in the audience?
No, we don't.
We will close the public hearing again at seven forty-one. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash one zero eight?
Move approval code.
Second, Martin. We have a motion in the second, send the vote please.
Counsel member Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. If the council is concerned about the, you know, the, the, the.
A move approval code.
Second, Martin. Do we have a motion and a second, send the vote please?
Counsel member Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. We're running out of the non-consent agenda. Item seven A, consider resolution number twenty-one dash one zero seven. Resolution establishes solid waste from the second piece for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
This, this, uh. This is my issue, um, and just wanted to report to the council and have action regarding the garbage rates and the recycling rates. These, uh, the rates are going up very slightly, um, compared to where they are right now. At least on the garbage side, it's actually a point two percent increase. And a lot of that's related to the factors that they use in returning, how the rates are. So that was very favorable. The recycling rate is going to go up a little bit more, they're going to have actually forty-four cents from the current three dollar forty-five cents per household per month to, um, three dollar ninety-nine cents per household per month. And so, um, each year we take a look at what the adjustments are going to be for each of these items and as a resolution about the new rate suitability, if that makes any way of.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Jen? Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash one zero seven? Move, Martin.
I second, I second.
Motion and a second, send the vote please.
Counsel member Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
What was quarter one, motion passed.
Three.
Next item, seven B, consider first reading ordinance number twenty, or number ten fifty-two. An ordinance amending Johnson Drive's ordinances of two thousand and seven by amending the language of chapter ninety-nine point zero eight sanitary sewer usage charge.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, this item is a clerical correction for our industrial wastewater surcharge fee. Um, currently it is found in two separate chapters in our city ordinance. It's found in chapter ninety-nine as well as chapter one hundred. Uh, fees do not match, however, and chapter ninety-nine of fee is highly unupdated. Uh, ordinance ten fifty-two amends code section ninety-nine oh eight and has it, and refers it to chapter one hundred. Um, the wastewater, industrial wastewater surcharge fee is set and collected by the, the WRA for all natural communities. This has been reviewed by legal and approved, um, we have to answer.
Counsel, any questions for Jen? On to the motion of, the first reading of ordinance number ten fifty-two.
Move approval, Temple.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Send the vote please.
Counsel member Hope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Next. Item seven C, consider approval of the following items related to the feezing case twenty-one dash zero five. Some of our property is located in ninety-one twenty-one Windsor Parkway. Resolution twenty-one dash one eighteen, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding parkland. Windsor Road Homes, plaque one. Resolution twenty-one dash one nineteen, a resolution approving the final plaque for Windsor Road Homes, plaque one.
Good evening, Clayton Nider on Zoom. Uh, we've seen this project before. It's, uh, on Windsor Parkway, just west of Vintage Co-op, senior housing. It's, um, Jerry's Homes proposing to subdivide four point two two acres into thirty-three townhome lots. Uh, I'm not going to go into a complete detail on this unless there's specific questions. Um, but I will highlight that they are proposing to do an equal value alternative parkland dedication, which consists of cash in lieu of land dedication. And that's the, uh, the development agreement you have in front of you. And like I said, if you want me to go into further detail or answer questions, I'm happy to do that.
Counsel, are there any questions for Martin?
Clayton, I know we had, we were in an earlier process on this. We had some feedback when they were, you know, during that night. Remind me where that was in the process. Was that, was that in the workshop session or was that in the preliminary?
At the preliminary plat, site plan stage, there was public comment of architecture and the buffer on the north side of the property. And with the approval there, the applicant did modify the architecture, um, to address many of the comments from, from the neighbors. And the, an alternative buffer on the north property line was approved, um, to make sure we're getting the right tree in the right spot, but maintaining a buffer there.
Thanks for that.
Do we have any additional comment from the neighbors, uh, subsequent to those changes?
Uh, no additional comment has been received.
So do we have anyone on line list tonight?
Seeing none.
Counsel, are there any further questions to comment? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash one eighteen?
Move approval code.
Second, Martin. Do we have a motion and a second, send the vote please?
Counsel member Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash one nineteen?
I vote aye.
Do we have a motion and a second, send the vote please?
Counsel member ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. On to item seventeen, consider approval of claims in the round one, ninety-four hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Move approval code.
Second, Martin. Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Send your vote please.
Counsel member Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to city administrative staff comments. We have, um, three items that we still need to cover that weren't covered previously. Should we do the water sewer utility catch flow and rate review first?
I think that makes sense.
Do that.
We're back to the workshop session.
This was an item under the workshop session, item three.
Mayor Council, uh, this is our finance advisor, Matthews, people from FIAF, who's wanting to update our cash.
So as we do every year, we work with the city and the, the water sewer catch flows. And we provided that in detail for you. And so tonight, uh, we just wanted to go over our recommendations. Uh, we met with the, the finance committee, uh, back at the end of March, we reviewed these with them. Uh, and so at this time, um, we're not recommending a, a rate increase on your water utilities. Um, you know, the, if, if we look through the, the metrics that I can look at, um, which are coverage and cash and then, you know, what's on the horizon that will need to be funded with either cash or, or bonds. Um, the city's in a very, you know, very strong position there. You know, part of, in my opinion, part of what's kind of makes the water catch flow a little bit limbo is kind of the, the result of the ZENIA settlement lawsuit. And so that, um, you know, depending on how that plays out, if there's infrastructure need to get to the northwest infestation area, you know, that will put pressure on the water catch flow in the future to kind of fund some of those bigger capital items. But at this time, you know, absent any of those, you know, five or ten million dollar type capital improvements that you have to make in, in the water fund, you're sitting at a really good, really good position from, um, from a coverage standpoint. And then, which is kind of your net revenue, the available debt divided by your debt service, as well as your cash position, um, is getting, you know, north of a hundred percent, um, which is where we start to, you know, really look for cities to have a, a need for that money to spend it in their capital improvement. And so Des Moines Water Works did pass on a, a three percent rate increase that the city, uh, started to pay April first, um, which was lower than what we had built in. We had built in a five percent rate increase, so that, that was helpful. Uh, this fall has been pretty dry, because there's been a lot of irrigation sales, so that helps the water catch flow. So, you know, right now, absent the capital improvements, um, I don't have a rate increase this year. I don't have one next year or the following year. And so I think you're, you're in a really good position on the water fund, uh, to be able to have, you know, obviously, absolutely. Any questions for councilmen and members of the water staff?
Counsel, are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I think there's, man, I really appreciate the documents you've been getting and throwing off a lot in great detail. So if you look at this water information, you look at line eleven regular meters, so the number of meters in the city gets grown. If you look at the audit, the first column is from sixty-seven hundred meters in seventeen eighteen to seventy-one hundred meters. So it's not quite, we've got, we're using growth, but, and so, but at the same time, actual regular water usage, not irrigation, but regular water usage is down. And so, I mean, but for people who are concerned that we're using too much water, or, you know, there's people with lots of concern. And that's really concerns a legitimate. I just thought that was sort of a positive, good news story that even though we're seeing growth in the water, number of water users, it might have bothered that people actually using it actually, uh, not growing, which I think is a positive sign. It's kind of translated into a ordinance, so, you know, that's kind of interesting, like, they're deciding that. Yeah, I think that's a great observation. I think if you look across the country and really, like, conservation is really picking up, you know, like, maybe the new appliances that people are putting in, the smart, um, the toilets, you know, and all of those things help, help to kind of mitigate that, that maybe, so, yeah.
Any questions for councilmen? Water information?
So on the sewer, sewer catch flow is kind of a different story. Um, there's, you know, a lot of dynamics there, but really the headline story is the infrastructure that we've got to get up to the northwest infestation area. And, um, you know, the, it, it's about sixteen million dollars over the course of the next three years. Um, and so that's, that's significant, um, for the city of Johnston. You know, the WRA has a five hundred million dollar capital improvement plan, which you, you participate in. The WRA is about two point eight percent of all of their debts, their more debts. And so, you know, that's got pressure on your, on your rates. And so, uh, and it's really, it's not the first bond issue for the, for the next segment. It's really the one right after that, which is the, which is the, uh, I think it's, I don't know, do the math and adjust this. But so the first segment to get up, kind of to the golf course up there, um, you can kind of fit within, I would say you need a five percent rate increase. So then that next eight million dollars, if you get you to that next, uh, next area, it really puts pressure on the rates in terms of you really need about two, ten percent rate increases. And so part of the reason why we're, you know, part of the reason why we're recommending just doing a five percent this year is we know you need a five percent just for that next segment. But that's our design, you know, getting through Canada is, you know, obviously has its challenges. Um, there's grant money potentially out there. There's a lot of money, this next infrastructure bill that's coming. And so Grimes is joining the WRA, it should decrease your share by two and a half percent. So there's just, in my opinion, there's just too many moving pieces to lock in a five percent and two, ten percent right now. Like, we'll know a lot more a year from now, so let's go ahead with the five percent. We know we need it, that's the one I'm going to suggest. And then hopefully next year we can come back with less than ten percent rate increases. But we'll have that designed, you know, the city will have that infrastructure design. And they'll, they'll be big, you know, they'll have the, the, the lock-in rate increases in the future. So, um, you know, this, this cash flow, if we stop there, just let me go back on that one. You know, this cash flow is at, is a, a very interesting point because that line fifty-eight there, you've got to maintain around ten coverage on that. And so I've got to solve for those, for those rates. But if you go and you don't need to scroll back. But if you go, and you don't need to scroll back there, but if you go back to a couple of exhibits, I always, almost always if I include a debt, I include the amortization schedule, but rarely do I include the additional bonds test, which is another test on your, on your dentures, on your bond covenants that you need, that you need to do. But I include it because it's a driving factor on the ten percent. And so if you're at a really interesting mix-up where, you know, normally one constraint or the other is driving it, but it's really two or three constraints in this case that, that are affecting it. And so we want the, the cash, cash flow to get down to fifty percent when we get out to twenty twenty-seven, which is kind of at the low end of where I like to see the water sewer utilities. And so we're using one point five million of your existing cash to help buy down the debt. You know, and as we get through another year, we'll be able to say, then we do two million, then we do two point three million. And try to strike a balance between having good liquidity in the, in the sewer fund and then, you know, only as much debt as we need, you know, to kind of maintain. Like what, what's the best for the lowest rates possible? That's kind of what I try to solve for with these cash flows. I highlighted up in the top left, the WRA growth assumptions, so they're really difficult to predict. And so I think six percent is a good conservative number for next year, even in the long term, three percent. But it, you know, there's been years where you went up twelve percent, there's been years where you went down ten percent. So it's a really hard number that in the last three years, you've seen an increase, you know, which means that your flow allocation is growing faster than the rest of the metro. Can we stop there and see questions?
Also any questions?
It's been, not in this document, but particularly in the sewer rate charges table, you have there that shows the, kind of the comparative current typical residential sewer bill of forty dollars. It compares to the family, but now we have a sewer bill, so while it's, you know, we have a five percent projected increase this year and a ten percent in the future, we start from a basic survey template, so that makes me move this one there, so it's a potential big increase. Yeah, it's a good point. I have this table prepared for WRA refunding that we just did, and so I shared it with the committee, and I think it was a good idea to share here as well. But, but it's a good point, especially when you put it on a percentage, you need in dollars. You know, forty dollars in Johnston is very difficult. And so it's, it's, it's on the lower end, you know, other than maybe Urbandale and Urbanville, the heights, I think, five, the other ones, that's, that's close to you. But everybody else has relatively speaking, low expenses for the sewer bill. So yeah, five percent increase is, you're at least about two dollars a month for the average record.
Other questions or comments? So Teresa, what's next on this?
The first reading of sewer ordinance change will be on the next council meeting.
Thank you. We have two items, which one do you? Should we go to the barrel cats or should we go to the?
Intersection?
My name is Teresa.
The Merle Hay Johnson Drive intersection.
I'm sorry, Merle Johnson, what's the Merle Johnson drive intersection?
Good evening, Mayor and Temple. This evening, we want to introduce the design concepts for the Merle Johnson Drive intersection project. And we see any preliminary feedback and comments if I'm allowed. As we progress through the design process, we've concluded our first rounds of property owner meetings. And take enough consideration, take, take into consideration their design requests, such as the largest one is access points. With Sonic, as well as the Jimmy Johnson Bandit Burrito, their drives are pretty much right at the intersection.
Three.
Everybody actually, the drives, it's present towards the west, to the, to anywhere that will, Johnson Drive will be on the west side of the intersection. We've also identified some threats and concerns with the intersection design, such as practical property impacts or the possible loss of a deep tree on the east side that's located in the right of way near the Herb Garden site. We've also performed a traffic study on the intersection.
Intersect drive.
And currently, the intersection has challenges partly due to the large construction vehicles that access this intersection. It takes them a little bit longer to get moving, so they went to slowly through that. We checked resulting in us extending timings on Johnson Drive, which takes timing away for the north-south traffic on Merle Hay Road. Knight is currently looking to open their facility in June of twenty twenty-two. As the design team is nearing our second round of property owner meetings, we need to select a design and move forward with that so that we can start discussing right-of-way acquisitions. Currently, we're slightly behind our anticipated spending. So Patrick is here with us tonight, we both, and he walked through the traffic study as well as each concept, which range from expanding the intersection on the north side with the loss of the deep tree or shifting the intersection to the south, increasing property impacts to those folks on the south, or we can add an additional road to the west and do nothing with that intersection, north-south on the east side. So with that, I'll let Patrick walk through the three design concepts, and we're going to get any questions.
And just, would you, if you guys, the documents you've been up here, circulate those to those happening meetings?
Yes. Uh, thank you for being back, trying to thank the person. Just very quickly, we'll run through the alternatives here. And I'm really primarily focused, we have three alternatives, and primarily focuses on the east way of Johnson Drive. And one of the alternatives is essentially do nothing alternative, which is what it is out there today, which is a three-lane section. So what you see here before you today, for tonight, is what our report alternative is right now. Based on the traffic study, as Matt had mentioned, it is recommending, when one did announce that we had, what currently westbound, southbound, or on the road. And so to do that, because of the restrictions, because of the restrictions on, uh, with the property in the southeast corner of that intersection, we were proposing to do that widening all to the north on the former Herb Garden site. As you can see, what's shown up here on the left-hand side, we have about a six-foot shift that happens in the intersection itself, and that is in both directions, uh, going eastbound and westbound. The most I've ever done in the past is about a six-inch to a quick shift, so we're kind of pushing the limits of what we would like to see. So what we're trying to do is really balance the impacts between the Jimmy Johnson and the Bandit Burrito and Sonic on, on the west side of the intersection. That is the reason why we are pushing up against that limit to do a six-foot shift. While we do widen to the north, we are getting into a established beach treaty that is out there. And thus, we've looked at some other alternatives to be able to address some of the concerns I've been brought up about trying to save that tree. So quickly, if you want to go ahead and shift to the next alternative, Cindy, and zoom in on the intersection, please. So this was another alternative that we went ahead and looked at. This goes ahead and shows all the widening on the south side of Johnson Drive on the east side. And as you can see, the, the proposed, and this is the county, the second, uh, build, or the second left turn lane. That pushes the widening all south up against the existing development right there. That takes to be pretty tight. In order to do this, and, and, and we also have more impacts over on the, um, west side of the intersection, because that would, we would propose there'd be about a ten-foot shift in there. But if you think about that, you're only shifting over a full lane with this alternative. This, me, is, is, I think we're, we're going over that limit for consistency's sake, uh, what we've done elsewhere, and what some other communities have done, some very wide intersections. So, so we're really kind of, me personally, I think we're going on the threshold with this alternative. Plus, we're really kind of impacting the, the challenges of the existing development already on the south side of the road. As part of that alternative, if you just pop back there quickly, you can see, uh, uh, towards, uh, the, the east end, by the shooting club over there, there would be a retaining wall that would be required. That could probably be an access, I believe, about a hundred thousand dollars to create that, that retaining wall in through there. Because when you widen to the south, the, the elevations between the property up the very southeast corner of the intersection and the shooting club, that drops off quite a bit. Now, we do have some challenges there, trying to find access to that, that we're still trying to work through with the, the property owners. And that's something that we, we're really pushing to get our second round of meetings, uh, with, so we can do that. In order to do that, we really kind of need to hone in and take out what the design said to do, so we know exactly what the impacts are going to be. And we communicate that for the property owners. And then it just went pop to the last alternative, it just really quickly, it just kind of shows you what's out there today, and then how we would go ahead and tie into that with what we have showing on the west side of the roadway. Again, it's, it's a three-lane section, and the problem that we have a little bit with Johnson Drive on that east leg is just with the industrial area and the quarries, and, yeah, quarries, the, the readyness companies, as well as the asphalt plant over there. We see a lot of traffic and materials from heavier trucks in there. And that typically takes longer to get the vehicles through, just because there's, they take more time to start and maneuver the corner than a traditional industrial area of, of passenger vehicle. So, uh, traffic safety back, it says that if we do add a second left turn lane, we can apply a high level of service in our design hot horizon here for twenty forty-six. And, uh, if we don't add that second left turn lane, then we will start experiencing delays, higher delays in the north-south movement on Merle Hay Road. And the reason why is if I add a second left turn lane on Johnson Drive, we can identify more time from Merle Hay Road, which will help the coordination plan to open down Merle Hay Road. Being as close to the interchange, you know, with I-8 there, there's an A-8 first, east-west rail, and north-south in the interstate, we see this damage. Quickly, we'll, we'll go ahead then, as far as process, we'll, as the council members both suggested, we'll get this information out of the council. And I believe the power meeting next week will kind of talk in more detail.
We had a, we had a discussion, I don't know, this, this morning, councilmembers, Copeland, Martin were part of that discussion. Given the concern that we've heard from some of our residents regarding the tree, we thought it would be most appropriate to schedule a special meeting to have a discussion where co-site members could attend if they want to attend and hear what the discussion is and, and offer any comments they might have at that time. We wanted to give councilmembers, Reddy and Temple, some introductions this, this evening, so it's not, so they understand why we're having a special meeting and, and give them some idea of what the special meeting is all about. But there will be an agenda, and it will be properly noted, and the materials that are sent out and announced at the meeting for that agenda, that meeting.
Uh, one thing is, you should be receiving the three documents, one will be the alternatives, the three alternatives. The second one will be the full roll-on traffic report. We tried to condense that traffic report down into about one and a half pages. So I will just look at the Word document if you can, and you'll get the, just the traffic report condensed down. And if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them at the next council.
And so what we're looking at, councilmembers Reddy and Temple, is a special meeting next Monday night at seven o'clock. Is there any reason why that would be a, a problem for either of you? Is there still others?
We do.
Are you asking us a question, Mayor?
I asked if a special meeting scheduled for next Monday night at seven o'clock is going to be local for you.
At what time, you say?
Seven o'clock.
Uh, thank you, it should be okay.
Councilmember Temple?
Yeah, sorry, I was pulling up my calendar there. I think I can do that.
Well, we would have, we would have a majority of councilmen, that works for council members as well. So that's what we can plan on. Any, any questions, uh, this evening, relating to the information that has been presented?
Can, can you share this document with us, please, before that meeting? Thank you.
Any chance of giving some photos of the trees we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Patrick, you've talked, on each option, you've made some statements regarding the alignment of the lanes. When you deliver this additional information to the council, can you go through each option in which, you know, I know that in one option, the alignment for going to the west is better, in another option, the alignment for going east. Can you put that into your evaluation or?
Yeah, the, the, the distances are called off on there. I'll put some thought to that.
Yes.
I try to do a better job explaining that when it will.
Yeah, because I'm kind of all over the place. Like, I, I kind of forgot which option was the better one for going east, but not so good for coming out, so thank you.
We tried to balance it, and, and really, it just took the, the existing businesses on the west side of, of, of not trying to play a favoritism to one or the other. We tried to balance that and really keep their sites functional, so that we didn't have to get into a total acquisition model. So, um, we'll, we'll get more details on that in a few minutes.
The other one additional document, I think it would be helpful to include in the materials, is the identifying of, of kind of, of all the various sort of high-profile trees on the, uh, on the Herb Gardens property. The, because there's the one tree that's specifically backed by this project, and then there's several other trees that are, that, that likely are. And so it's, it's important to kind of have that full understanding. So what asks of that document also to include as part of the materials. Does that have a dear, or does it have a, so?
Any other questions or comments related to this? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one additional scheduled item this evening, and that once again, back on the work session agenda, and that is to discuss the state Johnson Animal Control, possible implementation on the feral cats program.
Good evening, Mayor Council, I'm going to come to a brief rundown of the timeline here. Just to revisit, in the process of this, with point two, the decision package submitted by me regarding introduction of a trap neutral program to attempt to address feral cats. We've got about twelve different locations throughout the city that are identified approximately, we're going to have a few hotspots. The intent behind the, the testing program is to, to take a, a new approach, a new effort to work through trying to control cat population. We have a fair amount of, of concerns for neighbors, but it's a quality of life issue for some, dependent on which side you, you come down on. Either the danger of, of cats or, or, you know. The projection was four thousand dollars, experimentally proved, from Herb Garden. I'm a, I'm a great investor in that program, so in preparation for the, the upcoming budget period, I had that point where if we go back and revisit this program with the background, we're really interested in this, taking the program, secretly dislocating the green services, check the duties, and also for our city to see that there's an additional definition in the city. So seeking guidance at this point, so when we start this for a trial period, or seeking the traditional methods of attempting to trap the animals and then coming together.
Okay, so I'm the one who's been the one who has questioned this program. And I did listen to the ARL program, I sat through the whole thing, and they made very excellent points about this trap neuter and return, these feral cats. One of the things, I'm a cat lover myself, and one of the things that struck my heart is the ARL says if you the A R L says if you, uh, take these feral cats to the shelter, uh, and, and then you put them up for adoption, nobody's going to adopt them. Because they are unadoptable, they're feral, they're not cute and cuddly, they're scared of people, they don't get adopted, so they get euthanized. That's tragic. The problem I've had, and, uh, we've talked, is that, uh, cats are a major killer of our native songbirds. And I think they kill other things too. And, um, they are not native to Iowa, they are invasive species. So if they were pythons from Burmese and weren't cute and cuddly and purr, I think we'd all agree that we don't want those out in our, you know, even if they could live in Iowa, we don't want those. But in, instead, it's cute cuddly cats that a lot of us have pets, and I have two cats myself. But they kill songbirds. And even if we're going to trap them and neuter them and return them, we're causing problems for our songbirds. And our songbirds already got in trouble time, they're losing habitat, uh, they're losing, uh, food sources, et cetera, et cetera. They run into glass windows and kill themselves, and it's amazing how many of them die. One of the things that, uh, the A R L president talked about, he admitted that, yes, there are a lot of things that kill our songbirds. But he said, oh, but these feral cats, they mostly are only taking the weak link, you know, the, the, the young or the sick birds. I don't know that he has any, uh, truly tracking information on that. I think we have to admit, it is a problem, and if we're going to return these feral cats to the community, it's, it's pretty much saying we don't care about our songbirds. Um, so I'm against the program. Uh, I would like to see how much money we're spending now in, in the program where we're not returning the cats. I mean, you said this would be a money saver, is that correct?
The, the goal in the long run is that, uh, the, to, to be frank with you, over the last year, we do not have done, uh, commercials on, uh, the trapping the cats being in the window, that are going to be, uh, covered now, so it doesn't, it's, it's out to us. We, we've tried not to trap cats over the last year. Um, the challenge we have is you've got to litter a kitten with just a hundred and twenty-five dollars per gallon of transport to the A R L. Uh, you, you have one bill that I think is about seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
They might have changed that, because I read through the latest information, and I thought it said it would root.
If, if they haven't been neutered, it's worth, it's.
Oh, okay. So, so again, I totally understand all the things about, uh, this. Um, but I think you have one person that even went to the A R L and took their, uh, took their community cat out and returned it to the neighborhood. Well, she, they couldn't have gotten that cat out without having it neutered, I don't think. I don't know either. But, but if she did that, she, I'm assuming a woman, if they did that, they would have had to pay the fees and all the other things and bring that cat back. So in that case, she paid for it, she got her cat back. I don't like it, but I'm, I'm not going to, you know, we're going to have to go, uh, chasing it down. But if you were to catch it again and went back to the shelter, she's going to have to pay for it again. Otherwise, she should keep it in her house. Um, so anyway, those are my, those are, those are my points. It's not a native species, uh, cats are invasive, they kill our native songbirds. We shouldn't be supporting returning them.
So are there, councilmember Martin, are there parts of our community where songbirds would be at greater risk? Maybe other areas where they're, they, they just don't, they just don't exist, and they're less risk. So could we do a pilot in one part of our community where, you know, probably they don't have songbirds?
I don't, I don't know. Um, I think cats range pretty far around, you know, they have a fair range. Um, I am a very good friend, she has community cats around her warehouse, she likes them, she thinks they take care of mice.
Well, that would be my second comment.
And I totally understand that point. But it should be her cat, she should be, uh, taking care of that cat, neutering that cat, taking, you know, uh, taking care of vet veils and all that other sort of stuff. I'm not saying that she can't have cats, I'm saying we shouldn't be returning stray cats. And, and people could be taking advantage of the city, you know? Oh, well, the city's going to take care of it, and, and, and they'll pay for it.
My, my other question was going to be kind of along the lines of, of what you just alluded to, and that is, by removing all of these cats, are we disturbing some natural balance in our, you know, in, in, in nature here? I mean, do the cat, do the feral cats in our community, do they help control, you know, the rabbit population and the mice population? And, you know, some of those things that, you know, I don't like in my backyard.
Well, but then, I guess, to me, and I, I, it, it just reading through the notes and indicating that there was some discussion in the public safety committee. I don't, I'm not on the public safety committee, so I don't know who is, I don't know what it is, or what these committees, except what I want. So who, was there a discussion, who was on it, how did that discussion go?
It was January twenty-ninth, public safety committee meeting, that was virtual. Councilmembers ready, councilmembers at, or, or which committee, especially the council, that, that discussion was.
Okay, so that's helpful to have that over there. I mean, from my standpoint, to me, it seems like the, the trap neuter, the term, program sort of sets a kind of, you know, because you can, you, you, you take the cat, you, the cat gets neutered, so the cat's not going to have additional litters of kittens. And so that's the, that's a benefit from the songbirds, and it's going to sense that this cat may still be a threat to songbirds, but it won't be producing any additional litters of cats. Um, while at the same time, we're, we're not engaging in the traveling and taking them, or, you know, which could result in, um, the cat being, the cat being euthanized, or something like that. It's more likely to happen. I, I don't have a big problem with that, but, but I can see that some members of our community are stronger cat holders than I am, could. And so to me, this seems to be, it seems like right now, we don't have proactive strategy. And I think we should have proactive strategy. Uh, and so that's why I, I, I would support this as a good proactive strategy, that to me, I think we can, that we can, that to me should be, have the widest possible, you know, that we, that we help sort of contain the, the feral cat prob, problem by not allowing them to have more kittens. Um, but at the same time, we're not subjecting the cat to, 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 so to me, I think that's a good program. Um, and so that's why I'm, I'm prepared to support it, and we don't want to put a safety committee in this space as well.
I would, uh, I would be supportive as well. Um, and I think, uh, I mean, it's kind of a difficult choice. It's almost like we're choosing between cats and, and cats and birds. And, um, you know, we all like both, but, um, it seems like if this program works, that over the long run, the number of feral cats should decrease, because we're not allowing new litters and the populate, I don't know how long it takes to get to that stage, but at some point, uh, the number of feral cats should decrease, which decreases the pressure on the songbirds. Um, I don't really see, maybe I'm missing something, but either we leave things as they are, or we try this trial program for a while and see how that does. Or, um, we catch the cats and euthanize them. And I'm not sure how well that would go over in the community either, even though we have people advocating for songbirds. I think we'd have a lot of people advocating, advocating against that as well. I don't know if there's a fourth alternative we're not hearing about, but it just seems to me in balancing, uh, the different options, that doing this on a trial basis makes the most sense.
I think maybe the formal alternative would be, would be to identify those areas where the songbirds might be at greater risk, if we can, if we can identify those areas.
Yeah, that seems to be, would be a, pretty significant scientific.
I don't know that it needs to be scientific, and we just, if not, if there are, if there are
I presume.
Groups of feral cats close to Tarrel Park, or the, we, we.
We have, we have a map here that shows where the feral cats are. I mean, the songbirds, I, I have, I hear a lot of songbirds outside of my home in the morning, at, between five and seven in the morning. Uh, and we have woods behind our home, so I'm, I'm, uh, making a wild, a hunch scientific guess that if you live somewhere near the woods, you have more songbirds. But I now don't determine some of your programs, but, you know. There are a lot of wonderful songbirds in our neighborhood, until the Waltine boat comes, with the fish that they catch from the training ground. And then that drives everybody in the neighborhood crazy for a while. They're like, they don't have a lot of stuff.
I really only think there's two options. The current program, which you have said you kind of not caught a lot of cats. But your current program is, you hear about a feral cat situation, you go catch a cat, you take it to the A R L, and you pay the fee, and that, that cat becomes the A R L's problem, which is probably, doesn't get adopted and gets euthanized. That's the current program. And the new program would be, we're going to save some money and skip the A R L altogether. We're going to take these cats to a vet, have them neutered, have their ears bombed, so you know that they've been neutered, and return it to the lot. Those are the two options.
I, I would hear that, and I also said, uh, that, either way, if we're catching, our goal with this is to engage those living in protective of those cats, and work with them to try to define a middle ground, that solution. And in course of that, if we come across litters of kittens, so we have the opportunity to trap them, to transport those to the A R L, or, or, again, perhaps adoption, that, if you like.
Right, they can probably buy homes for kittens.
Potential, so, um, so, it depends on what you want to try to look.
I get it, I get it, and it's a tough problem, um. I just, I know what the, what's happened to our songbirds, and I, and I know feral cats are a problem, but I appreciate that, what you're, um, what you're trying to do.
Yeah, it's my concern, I, I think a little bit is that we do kind of nothing if we do a program that is, is more expensive. And I, I think also leads to a potential, um, if people are realizing that we're capturing cats and taking them to the A R L and then resulting in the euthanasia, that that can, that can become a potential flashpoint. Um, and so we'll have people come to the council saying, please don't do that, please stop doing that. And, um, that is, I think, as problematic as, as anything else. So to me, the trap neuter program avoids that and stake a little bit of money, and so to me, that's, I think, that's why I'm.
So what I'm hearing is that the majority opinion is on the side of, let's give this a try, uh, right here, is that what we're looking at?
I, I would sort of like to, to gear up to start, and July, see what, what's our success, we have with the program, see if we can find some measurable data to, to work with. City of the Morning promoted a program a couple years ago that started to get some data to show a trend, uh, of the cat population being reduced, but, but, I haven't anything to qualify that, other than just.
There's some way that we can measure our success that way. The only, the question I have is that we not call them community cats, maybe they're our feral cats. Let's not, let's not make them sound like they belong, you know, belong to anybody.
You say a feral cat is a lion, yeah, that's a cat, doesn't, right?
No, I'm not saying it's a cat, it's a.
We're not talking about somebody's cat that's outside.
Right, right.
We are at large, where there's also common cats on this law, so if we have, if we can identify the owner of the cat that, that, that's an outside cat, that's a liability, so we'll, we'll, we should address that. If someone dumps off a cat at a banquet, we can address that. But this is that, that middle area, where the cat is, and, and, uh, to, to find the, the, the animal is, so that's where, with the city chairman, can, we can identify an emission point, they'll, 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 they'll.
I'm looking at this map, I know that none of the current elected officials have written that down.
The, the map is a little dated, so I.
Oh. Shit.
Well.
Well, I think we've concluded that discussion, we have the energy meeting.
Yes, appreciate you.
Okay, back to the agenda, is there any other specific issues that you have comments?
Uh, Mayor, I'm going to have to log off.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, bye.
Real brief comments, uh, the city applied for pre-application for the H O B investment district program. Um, we get the scores back, unfortunately, we scored sixty-seven out of seventy-three, advancing the application process. Uh, so we're not moving forward with that. The two metro project, or, two metro projects that didn't move forward to the application process are the Sock Stadium and the Brar Mall. Especially one of the good investments down there, okay.
I think that's a reason for us to encourage the legislative consideration.
I just, uh, one real quick, uh, communication piece. Um, I think everybody, all the council members received an email over the weekend from Chris Christensen with, uh, concerns over the flume. Um, just kind of give you an update, we did get out there today, kind of cleaned up the area. We're starting to remove some of the rocks, we're going to pull out some peat gravel, get that cleaned up, um, try to get some more infiltration of the water in that area. Um, Josh and I are going to be meeting next week, we're going, I don't know, Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't remember what day we decided, but, uh, we're going to go out there and, and try to come up with some type of long-term solution for that area. The tough location, it's, it's, historically, it's always held water out there. Um, even prior to any of the changes that we did a few years ago, it was holding water, so. It has either a zero slope, or it might be a, a tenth of a percent one way or another, but there's, there's basically no water that's moving, and there's water coming off the parking lots, um, coming into that area, so it does flush a bunch of debris and stuff in that, so. Way to try our best to see if we can come up with some type of solution that may be long-term. In the meantime, we'll get, try to get the area cleaned up and see if we can have at least a six-month to a year solution to get more infiltration into the area. Questions with that?
Could you just circulate a map over that?
Sure, definitely.
Sort of ironic, I think this weekend, we heard about two, we just, we hear about one.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the flume is what it is, it's, it's, um, wish, wish we would have had a solution, uh, accomplished, uh, what, ten years ago or so. We had, I think, a very positive solution there, but, uh, we'll, we'll deal with it the best we can.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Councilmember, councilmember, councilmember.
Who's that?
That's number one.
Um, just a couple, uh, and I just want to bring them up, kind of like a, put a pen in it, and maybe we can bring it up at an appropriate time. Um, some people were asking me whether or not we would require city employees to get a vaccine. And, uh, seems like maybe that is something we might have to have a conversation. I mean, people that meet with the company, if they're reluctant to get a vaccine, have we got, have we talked about this at all?
Yeah, I think we've got this guy.
We, we have.
Guys, and we have a H R finance committee meeting that's coming Friday morning at eight o'clock, so we can touch on it briefly with that committee.
Okay, that would be great, I'd like to hear what we're, what the thoughts are. Um, the other thing is, I was at the Beaver Creek Watershed meeting, and it was mentioned during that meeting that Camp Dodge has been discussing acquiring more length around their boundaries. And, uh, I was like, hmm, maybe we need to have a meeting with Camp Dodge and, and talk to them. As they continue to expand their boundaries, they continue to put pressure on us to grow. And, uh, it was also the Beaver, I think Jimmy were on it too, and David, maybe you were on it too. Um, so maybe we need to have a conversation with them. They have a huge portion of the, uh, Beaver Creek Watershed go through the, through Camp Dodge, and it's a huge watershed. Something else that's kind of, uh, an idea that I was thinking about, I know that they don't want people to be within their property. Um, they do some very scary stuff over there, but perhaps once or twice a year, they might open up. once or twice a year, they might open up a portion of the Beaver Creek watershed to recreation, like a one day a year kind of thing. Wouldn't that be a great community thing to, you know, because they're doing a lot of sustainable projects over there. So it might be kind of cool if we might ask, first, what are their plans for the future? And second, how about a cooperative thing, Johnson and them, in terms of celebrating each other? I don't know where you were.
Maybe, Jim and David know more, I guess. I did a ton of meetings with them about three years ago, and they said that their intentions were to keep their property boundaries south of 14. It's a drive. And I'm not sure if they've finished their acquisitions, but they have planned south of 14. I believe there's at least a couple outstanding, so I'd be curious to know if there's one of those several properties in Oregon that's outside of the factories. Is that a good change in the thought process from when you last opened?
I would just add that since I've been on the council for 10 years, I've never participated in a new event. So I think we need to have other local officials to this. I feel that is your communication. I'm sorry?
We have quite a bit.
Okay, there's not too much broader, so.
Any other staff comments? Oh, wait, we're already on the city council. Councilman Martin, or councilmember Martin, you can throw it. No. Councilman Ready?
Hi, Bash. Thanks.
I've been on the Councilman Temple. So the only, the only thing I'd add is that I thought the events this weekend went very well with the Papa kite event. Incredible turnout for that. So I think that is a good predictor of what we can expect for the lights on the green on May 1st. And the first of our new traditional wet-down push-in, the fire engine went incredibly well as well. So it was a great weekend for those kinds of activities, lots of, lots of community support and all of that. So I think, I think people are ready to get outside and start doing things again, being with others in the community. So thanks for all the effort that we've been able to do with events.
Evening, Mayor. I forgot, there's been a staff report that I've included, that if actually you can just read it, but it's a report regarding our April 1st interns renewal for the city's general liability package. It's included in the report, but I didn't mention it.
Do you think, Ronan? If not, the other one, Karen Hutch.
Hi, guys.